First in the house is Chestnut Tag. Angel Colazo is coming up and Joyce Vasquez. And the instrument crew is also here. Derek Arroyo Perez, Brandon Alainin. Correct me if I'm wrong. Amani Hayes, Jalen Watt, Tandy Bron...
Cory Norbert.
Bronno, right? Okay.
Principal Colleen O'Connor.
And Principal O'Connor. Colleen, I didn't see her.
Madam Principal.
She looks like a student.
Yeah, she does look like a student. You're right, ain't you?
That's a good thing.
Yeah. We mean that in a nice way.
Wish I could say the same.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Looking very shocked there.
We're gonna start with our readers here.
Hi, my name is Joyce Vascas and this is my classmate, Angel Colazo. And we are students at the Chestnut Tag. At Chestnut Tag, we have a lot of awesome activities and events. From each of these events, we learn something valuable. We gain knowledge that is meaningful to our everyday life. Some of these experiences we enjoy and appreciated the most are echoes. Slurridge Village, Boston Science Museum, Amherst College, UMass, and more. The school year is not over yet.
Good job.
Our current whole school... Our current whole school project that I am most proud of is Food Justice Campaign. This is a program that a group of Tag scholars came up with to help us keep track of what we eat each day. That means no junk food at Tag, just healthy snacks and daily exercises. In advisory, we write down what we eat each day. The final celebration of this work will be presented in our first Tag Healthy Cookbook. We promise to have a copy for all committee members. Honorable Mayor Sarno and Superintendent Warwick. It is with great excitement and enthusiasm that we share these achievements with you this evening. Thank you for your time. Gracias por tu tiempo.
Gracias. Come on. Now, we're gonna have a nice musical interlude. You're not gonna make me sing, are you? We don't wanna do that. Mr. Fuller, love in heaven would roll over. Yay! Wow! Nice. Send us something, right?
May 16th, he said.
May 16th. If they... Principal O'Connor, Colleen can follow through with that if our schedule permits. You did a great job.
Yeah, great job.
Great job. Okay. As we continue with arts and stuff, Springfield Conservatory of Arts is here. Tiana Nannely-Bess, Jaleah Wiggins. If I pronounce it wrong, please correct me. And Principal... Principal Brewster. Yo, Principal Brewster, I didn't... Got the beard, I didn't recognize him. Principal Brewster is here also. Okay. Just like the cough drop box. Okay, ladies. Good to see you. And I did receive a little... A letter about... We'll continue to pursue school for you too, okay?
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, member of our school committee, and visitors to tonight's special meeting of middle school representatives. I am Tiana Nannely-Bess.
And I am Jaleela Wiggins.
As you know, Jaleela and I are students at the Conservatory of the Arts.
We're also really good friends.
The Conservatory gave us the chance to be friends.
It's given us a chance to do a lot of things.
Like explore more of the world through art and dance.
I'm studying dance too. As a little girl, I used to take lessons at Toe2Toe in West Springfield. I liked it and wanted to do more, and the Conservatory gives me a chance to do that right here in my hometown.
We'll get to show off our dance skills at the dance showcase that we're preparing for now. It's our big end of the year show. Run routine we're working on is based on going to work. See, we're all going to work, and we suddenly break out dancing.
I wish the real world was like that.
Me too. We're also doing routine on Cinderella in the inner city. It's acting and dancing together.
There will be a lot of fairy tales in the show. Red Riding Hood, Rapunzel, Hansel and Gretel, some old school versus new school dance-off battles too. I love the dance showcase because I get to be onstage a lot.
And I get to perform and show off my talents.
We had some practice for this big show with the smaller show we did last month called Collisions and Connections. It showed the way cultures come together to make art. I was a dancer. I thought I was going to mess up, but I'm confident about what I did.
Me too, but I don't really like salsa because I don't like moving my hips, but I think I did pretty good.
My goal is now for dancer to work on my flexibility. I think it's already helped me to learn how to move faster.
It's helping me with my wrestling. I was born to wrestle. I love WWE so much. If I don't join Air Force when I get older, I'm going to be a wrestler.
I'm going to be a dancer. I want everybody to know me. I want to be that dancer that's been on all the TV shows. If that doesn't work, I'll be a vet.
Of course, you don't get to achieve your goals if you don't prepare for the future.
So, preparing now for the park test right after vacation.
We're doing a lot of park practice in ELA.
And also in math.
That comparing part we've been practicing, it's hard, but you got to be confident to get through life.
That's another one of my goals that dance helps me with, getting more confident in myself, especially when I have to be in front of people.
And I want to learn how to split.
If you don't learn it during this school year, you can learn it in one of the summer arts intensive that are being planned now.
I'll definitely be doing those again this summer.
Me too. I just hope they don't start so early.
I'm planning on taking drawing and dance and wrestling if they offer.
I don't think they're going to offer wrestling.
I'll stick to dancing then.
Good plan.
I also like to act. I'm using my drama skills in our social studies class right now.
Me too. We have an artist from Enchanted Circle Theater who comes to our room every day. He's helping us write plays about ancient Greece.
It's a good way to learn history.
And burn wolf bucks. Those are PBS reward points.
We get them for living up to our school motto.
Be kind, work hard, make art.
And wrestle.
Wrestling isn't a part of it. Tiana just got carried away.
I'm glad that I... I'm glad... I'm very glad that I could come tonight and tell you about how much I like our school.
We hope you'll come and see one of our shows. Thank you.
Nice job. Another round of applause. School committee woman, the new circus series, beautiful baby boy, Jackson, and she looks great. Congratulations. Doug in Academy is in the house. I see Principal Michael Calvinese is here. Ashante Starks, Anthony Ramos, come on down.
Here's... Sorry, I'm sorry, girl. We have our talk studio design... Can you go to the end of the floor?
You certainly may. You certainly may.
I'm sorry, Ashante.
Okay. Well, Forest Park Middle School's in the house. And Principal Tommy Maza is here. Bandana Attikari, which you got... And Anna Batista. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Come on down. Please correct me.
No, here, yeah.
You're being kind.
Yeah.
Thank you, ladies.
Hi. My name is Bandana Attikari, and this is my classmate, Anna Batista. We are eighth grade students representing Forest Park Middle School. We're going to talk with you tonight about our school's advisory program, our extracurricular activities such as drama and sports, our focus on community service, the April Vacation Science Bootcamp, and finally about how Forest Park has helped prepare us for high school. The advisory program is an extension of fifth period each day where students get about thirty to forty minutes of extra time with their teacher. During this time, you can have an individual conference with the teacher, or you can make up classwork, correct tests and quizzes, or even complete the homework with the teacher. You do not have to have advisory with just your fifth period teacher. Instead, you can get a pass to any other class that you need to work on or need help in. The advisory program has really helped my school by giving the students time during the school day to catch up on our studies. Forest Park has also instituted enhanced extracurricular opportunities this year. Last week, twenty-five Forest Park students performed in the Midsummer Night's Dream Play directed by Mr. Cass and Ms. Nelson. In addition, our boys and girls basketball team finished with a combined record of fifteen wins and only one loss. After April Vacation, our school will participate in a research study provided by the United States Department of Agriculture on food and nutrition. The goal is to raise awareness and importance of healthy food choices and physical activity. Thank you for your time.
Nice job.
Hi, I'm Anna Batista. This year, during April Vacation, Forest Park is offering a Science MCAS bootcamp for eighth graders who will be taking the test in May. Science Bootcamp gives us an opportunity to review science material third and sixth and seventh grade and focuses on hands-on projects to teach us technology and engineering. Even though we are giving up some of our vacation time, I know the teachers will make it fun and worthwhile. We feel the entire Springfield community should be most proud of not only our school's academic success, but the dedication and growth on our school's focus on civility and community service. Throughout this year, each of our students voluntarily performed twenty hours of community service such as helping Judy Matt with being the welcoming committee of the Spirit of Springfield Bright Nights, Salute to Public Safety Night, and the Bright Nights Road Race. We tutored elementary school students from our Freedom Elementary School. And most notably, in conjunction with the Forest Park Civic Association, we adapted a home of a ninety-four-year-old elderly woman on Oakland Street. Ms. Simmons' data group, Two Twenty Four, shoved her driveway and sidewalks during the winter.
Yes. Very good.
Four hundred students came to school on Saturday to clean up an abandoned alleyway on Lantern Street. At Forest Park, we are not only learning to be smart academically, but also learning what it means to be productive members of the City of Springfield community. Forest Park Middle School has helped prepare us for high school by giving us the proper tools and strategies to be successful. The teachers at Forest Park pushes every day to always try our best. My reading teacher, Ms. Geis, is always there for me, and whenever I need help or do not understand something, she does not let us down and motivates us to try our hardest. In conclusion, Forest Park has prepared us to be successful in the high school and beyond. FPMS stands for focused, prepared, motivated, and safe. And with the help of the Forest Park teachers, I know I can achieve all those things.
Great job. How's my nephew Chris Cummings doing, all right? Great job. Great job, Principal Maza. Thank you, ladies. We'll now go to Kennedy Middle School, Xavieron Hatchett. Onexis Lopez, correct me if I'm wrong. Yuville Peralta. 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 Correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Onexis.
Onexis, I was close. Hi, ladies. Is Principal...
I don't see him. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Onexis Lopez. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Mitchell, one of our beloved teachers and amazing woman, who enlightened my mind. She taught me many lessons as a coach, human being, gym teacher, and companion. She taught me to never give up, to keep my head held high, and of course, always bring my coach for gym class. The news of her passing is unbelievable. When I heard the shocking news, I went home crying and fell asleep crying. That night, I had a dream. In my dream, I saw Ms. Mitchell at a store buying a green shirt. In my dream, I heard her voice, her soft raspy voice, southern voice. What a beautiful accent. Seeing her at the wake yesterday was tough for me. I thought that I wouldn't be able to do it, but I did. I had a lot of good memories of her. One time I saw her, I ate jewelry's store in my...
You're doing fine. You're doing fine.
The funny thing about this all is that my mom was cleaning her jewelry. That day was memorable because we keep meeting her around the mall. I really miss her, and I know others do too. I want to hear her voice once more. I want to give her a huge hug. I want everyone to know that she's happy and looking upon us from heaven because she was a Christian woman with a loving heart.
Very nice.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julieve Peralta, and I am here to share with you who Ms. Mitchell was to me. Ms. Mitchell was one of the best, strongest teachers I ever had and known. She wasn't just a teacher to me. She was family, and I loved that woman so much, you just cannot understand how or why. Ms. Mitchell had a funny, crazy attitude that no one could imitate. She was hardworking, joyful, and a funny, loving person. She was just Ms. Mitchell, always doing her exercises in the locker room like a pro. But the best part about being with her was during after-school. I used to stay with her every week. She would always tell me, "Go home. Don't you have a home?" And I would say, "I just wanted to stay with you." So then, we would go to her room and just dance and hear to music. I will miss those days. I love you, Ms. Mitchell, and you will never be forgotten. This woman was the bravest, strongest woman I ever known. She came to school and pretended her pain, and we didn't know she was sick. She would just walk it off. Who can ever know she was sick? No one, not even any of us three the closest to her, we didn't see anything wrong with her. She was so brave and strong, you can imagine. I'm so proud of her. She had the guts to come to school and deal with us kids. Ms. Mitchell, I love you so much, and I will always remember you. I will never forget you. Rest in peace, Ms. Mitchell.
Nice job.
Good evening. My name is Xavieron Hatchett, and I'm here to talk to you about a beautiful woman who influenced my life. Mrs. Mitchell was a great coach, a great teacher, and a great human being. This woman's death put a big dent in my heart. Knowing that the only teacher I was close, that I respected and loved is gone changed me forever. I'll never forget the day I got injured playing soccer. I mean, goalie's a very hard thing. As my coach, Ms. Mitchell was in the waiting room of the hospital with me. She was like family and still is in my heart. I never thought I would have to leave to high school without her seeing us being promoted to ninth grade. That would make her proud. I wanted to play my last year of volleyball with my favorite coach. This woman wasn't like any ordinary coach. She did everything she could to sacrifice herself to us. She was a very brave woman to me. No one cared for me like Mrs. Mitchell did in school. Seeing her at the wake brought me to tears. I didn't want to lose her too soon. It hurts me to read this, but I want everyone to know how I feel. People need to understand how great of a teacher and a coach she was, other students, and how much this hurt all of us. I want to humbly thank you for letting me speak to you on behalf of my loving coach, Mrs. Annie Mitchell.
Nice job.
We come here all today to say what's on our mind and hearts. Us three young ladies, Julieve, Xavieron, and myself, are some example and role models on who we really are and how we really feel on losing someone that is close to you one minute and out the door the next second.
Thank you very much, young ladies. You did a very nice, very nice job on a difficult subject. Thank you. Kylie Middle School is in the house. I don't know if Principal Sutton's here. I do see Vice Principal Bobby Francesca here. Jadelyn Flucker, Shanny Quinones, Casey Blyther. If I pronounce anything wrong, please correct me. Come on up. How are you, ladies?
Good.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and school committee members. My name is Casey Blyther, and I am an eighth grade student at Kylie Middle School. The most important things I have learned during my time at Kylie Middle School is when you believe in yourself, you can accomplish anything you want in life. It doesn't matter how many times you have done something wrong. None of that matters. Do you know why? It is because every teacher at Kylie Middle School believes that every student is going somewhere in life. Next year, I hope to attend Putnam High School. I decided to attend Putnam High School because I feel like it will be a fun place to learn new things and make new friends. I decided to attend Putnam High School because it is a place where you are encouraged to be yourself. After high school, I'm interested in joining the Air Force. I'm a very active and motivated person, so I think the Air Force would be a good fit for me. I would also be able to earn money for college. I'm also interested in becoming a nurse. The reason that nursing is interesting to me is that I like to help people and make them feel better. It makes me happy to be able to put a smile on someone's face every once in a while. As I get ready to leave Kylie and prepare for my transition into high school, the advice that I would give to incoming sixth grade students is to keep your head up and stay strong and believe in yourself. Don't let anyone tell you that you can't achieve your goals. As we all know, teachers will be on your back every minute of the day. Let me tell you though, those teachers that are on your back twenty-four-seven are the teachers that care the most. For example, our assistant principal, Mr. Francesca, is on every kid's back at Kylie Middle School. But guess what? That means he cares a lot. He cares where you end up in life, and he works very hard to help Kylie students achieve their goals. I would like to thank Mr. Francesca for everything that he has done to support me during my time at Kylie Middle School. Thank you for your time and have a nice night.
Nice job. They love Bobby.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and the school committee members. My name is Shawna Quinones, and I am going to tell you about my academic goals for the rest of the school year. I want to eventually have the best grades for the last quarter. Also, I want to do really well on the park test. My goals for high school are to study cosmetology and focus on doing very well academically. My hope is to be accepted at a really good college. Some careers that I'm interested in are becoming a hairstylist because I love doing other people's hair and my own hair as well. I'm also interested in becoming a nurse because I want to make sure that others are safe and healthy. I also want to prevent illnesses from spreading. I have even thought about becoming a school principal because I know they have a lot of great things to do, and it's a huge responsibility. I know that if I stay focused on my goals and continue to do work hard and to continue to work hard, I can be anything I want to be. My advice for incoming sixth graders that will be attending Kylie next year is to work hard and stay focused from the beginning. You might feel like sixth grade is tough, and seventh grade is going to be even tougher. But if you do your best and stay focused on your goals, you will get through it and be successful. When you're in eighth grade, you might feel like your teachers are constantly throwing new information and assignments at you, but you will get through it. Even though sometimes it seems like they are being hard on you, it's because they really care and they want you to succeed and be a responsible student. No one is going to do the work for you. You have to continue to work hard, and you can achieve your goals. Thank you and have a good night.
Nice job. Before you start, young lady, we're also joined by former Board of Ed and on our empowerment zone, middle school empowerment zone board, Beverly Holmes is here, which we appreciate that very much.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and school committee members. My name is Jadelyn Flucker, and I'm here to tell you about my experience at Kylie Middle School. I have to say that I've changed a lot from sixth to eighth grade. When I first walked in, I was immature, disrespectful, and to tell the truth, a little bit annoying. But over these three years, Kylie has instilled in me discipline, self-control, and determination, three necessary skills needed to make it through life. This being my final year at Kylie, I will have to say that the most important thing that I have learned is nothing in life will ever be handed to you. It takes hard work and dedication in order to accomplish goals you have set for yourself. All of the teachers and administrators at Kylie do their best to teach every single student just how to do that. Attending Kylie Middle School has shown me how teachers and administrators put the time in to make sure we understand our work. If we are struggling, our teachers are more than willing to stay after and help us understand the work that we do. I'm really gonna miss my administrators, Mr. Sutton, Mr. Francesca, and Mr. Lorenzo. My guidance counselor, Mr. Gilbert, and all of my teachers. Without them, I wouldn't be prepared for high school, college, and life, and that is our number one goal at Kylie. Thank you for your time and have a good night.
Nice job. That's my alma mater. Nice job, ladies. South End Middle School's in the house. Donovan Gonzalez. I think he's been up here a couple times. And you brought a guest too. Okay.
Um, Michael, please. Okay. Hello, everyone on the panel, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and members of this school committee meeting. It's me, Donovan Gonzalez.
And me, Liz Rivera. From South End Middle School, once again. We hope you've all had a wonderful day.
South End has been phenomenal these past months. Maybe it's because summer is nearby and the students want to go places instead of summer school, or maybe it's because everyone's settled in. I do know that the kids are not refusing the rules and routines anymore. My grades are good, and I've made the commitment to ace the last quarter of eighth grade.
I'm bringing up my grades also. Over the last few Anet math tests we've taken, the eighth grade has beaten the Springfield school networks by a few points. In order to do this, we had lots of review. We played Jeopardy, took lots of notes, went over those notes, and we did quizzes to test ourselves. On the Anet testing days, we were focused and we raised our hands so that our classmates could have quiet testing environment.
Now, recently, when we took the ELA Anet, we were in a similar environment. Our classrooms were quiet, and also to simulate park, we had to give up our cell phones, my beloved cellphone.
Which we know is a huge sacrifice to make for these tests.
And also, we had a bathroom monitor, and we had sign-in and sign-out to use it, one by one.
Another thing different about this year at South End is that the teachers and the counselors are more helpful, not that they weren't before, but to give an example, there's high school choice. They went out of their way to give recommendations, and they gave us opportunities to get the right materials to be able to log in and ballot. Also, they taught us how to ballot just in case we didn't know.
Additionally, we've had after-school activities at South End Middle School this year. Two of these programs are the YMCA Y-Aim Program and the Leaders Club. The YMCA helps out with homework, and then they do physical activities. The Leaders Club helps us get ready for high school, college, and careers.
Donovan and I are actually participating in the Leaders Club. They've been helping us bring up our grades, not that we need it, and they're getting us to be better connected to the community. After-school programs aren't the only exciting things that go on at South End.
We've also been participating in a great project that... Sorry. We've also been participating in great projects that are fun as well. One specifically that the eighth grade did was about the abolitionist movement and its connection to Springfield. That project was a research project about the important people, places, and events that took place during that time.
We did this project to learn more about our history and trying to free slaves. Firstly, we researched a person, place, or event, wrote notes, and learned lots of information. We jotted down that information onto maps and posters. When we had all the information we needed, we went on a little field trip to the Pan African Museum. When we were there, we did a few activities. Then, we watched the Sojourner...
You got it.
Truth Short Film.
We walked the Trail of the Underground Railroad. During that walk, we found out that it wasn't actually underground. It was a secret passage from safe place to safe place. We also learned about the buildings and where they were here in Springfield. After the walk, we came back, and they showed us some of the old artifacts like slave shoes. Next, we went back to the museum and the African food. To wrap this up, to wrap this project though, we created presentations that we taught to the sixth and seventh grade students about what we learned. Representatives from the mayor's office were also visited.
To wrap this all up, that was just a little taste of what has been going on at South End Middle School. In conclusion, our school has reached many of its goals, and there are many more to come. Thank you for your time. We hope you have a wonderful night.
Nice job. Nice job, Principal Despirits, Cheryl too. Nice job there. Springfield Renaissance School is in the house. Adriana Ochoa Maya Sinquiz. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Hi, Maya. This is Adriana. We are sixth grade Renaissance students, and we are here to present to you our STEM-based spring expedition.
Our spring expedition that the sixth graders had taken part in started two weeks ago that was called the Mission to Mars. The auditorium was black. The walls filled to the brim with questions as the hallways risen our excitement. As we were confused, we could hear the sound of ten, nine, eight, seven, as a rocket ship blasted off into space. Then, an actual astronaut candidate told us about the journey we were about to embark on. She gave us our guiding question, "Should we colonize Mars?" You may be asking, "Why is this important?" In the real world, scientists are trying to figure out if we should colonize Mars, and an issue that a civilization is facing that we are learning about today.
Nice job.
They then...
I hope to attend Putnam High School. I decided to attend Putnam High School because I feel like it will be a fun place to learn new things and make new friends. I decided to attend Putnam High School because it is a place where you are encouraged to be yourself. After high school, I'm interested in joining the Air Force. I'm a very active and motivated person, so I think the Air Force would be a good fit for me. I would also be able to earn money for college. I'm also interested in becoming a nurse. The reason that, the reason that nursing i- is interesting to me is that I like to help people and make them feel better. It makes me happy to be able to put a smile on someone's face every once in a while. As I get ready to leave Kylie and prepare my, prepare for my transition into high school, the advice that I would give to incoming sixth grade students is to keep your head up and stay strong and believe in yourself. Don't let anyone tell you that you can't achieve your goals. As we all know, teachers will be on your back every minute of the day. Let me tell you though, those teachers that are on your back 24/7 are the teachers that care the most. For example, our assistant principal, Mr. Francesca, is on every kid's back at Kylie Middle School. But guess what? That means he cares a lot. He cares where you end up in life, and he works very hard to help Kylie students achieve their goals. I would like to thank Mr. Francesca for everything that he has done to support me during my time at Kylie Middle School. Thank you for your time and have a nice night.
Nice job. They're well done.
Good evening Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and the school committee members. My name is Shawna Quinones and I am going to tell you about my academic goals for the rest of the school year. I want to eventually have the best grades for the last quarter. Also, I want to do really well on the part test. My goals for high school are to study cosmetology and focus on doing very well academically. My hope is to be accepted at a really good college. Some careers that I'm interested in are becoming a hairstylist because I love doing other people's hair and my hair, my own hair as well. I'm also interesting, interested in becoming a nurse because I want to make sure that others are safe and healthy. I also want to prevent illnesses from spreading. I have even thought about becoming a school principal because I know they have a lot of great things to do and it's a huge responsibility. I know that if I stay focused on my goals and continue to do, work hard, and to continue to work hard, I can be anything I want to be. My advice for incoming sixth graders that will be attending Kylie next year is to work hard and stay focused from the beginning. You might feel like six, sixth grade is tough and seventh grade is going to be even tougher. But if you do your best and stay focused on your goals, you will get through it and be successful. When you're in eighth grade, you might feel like your teachers are constantly throwing new information and assignments at you, but you will get through it. Even though sometimes it seems like they are being hard on you, it's because they really care and they want you to succeed and be a responsible student. No one is going to do the work for you. You have to continue to work hard and, and you can achieve your goals. Thank you and have a good night.
Nice job. Before you start, young lady, we're also joined by former Board of Ed and on our empowerment zone, middle school empowerment zone board, Beverly Holmes is here, which we appreciate that very much.
Good evening Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and school committee members. My name is Jada Lynn Flucker and I'm here to tell you about my experience at Kylie Middle School. I have to say that I've changed a lot from sixth to eighth grade. When I first walked in, I was immature, disrespectful, and to tell the truth, a little bit annoying. But over these three years, Kylie has instilled in me discipline, self-control, and determination. Three necessary skills needed to make it through life. This being my final year at Kylie, I would have to say that the most important thing that I have learned is nothing in life will ever be handed to you. It takes hard work and dedication in order to accomplish goals you have set for yourself. All of the teachers and administrators at Kylie do their best to teach every single student just how to do that. Attending Kylie Middle School has shown me how teachers and administrators put the time in to make sure we understand our work. If we are struggling, our teachers are more than willing to stay after and help us understand the work that we do. I'm really gonna miss my administrators, Mr. Sutton, Mr. Francesca, and Mr. Lorenzo. My guidance counselor, Mr. Gilbert, and all of my teachers. Without them, I wouldn't be prepared for high school, college, and life, and that is our number one goal at Kylie. Thank you for your time and have a good night.
Nice job. That's my alma mater. Nice job, ladies. South End Middle Schools in the house, Donovan Gonzalez. I think he's been up here a couple times. And you brought a guest too, okay.
Um, Michael, please. Okay. Hello, everyone on the panel, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and members of this, of this school committee meeting. It's me, Donovan Gonzalez.
And me, Liz Rivera.
Liz Rivera.
From South End Middle School, once again. We hope you've all had a wonderful day.
South End has been phenomenal these past months. Maybe it's because summer is nearby and the students wanna go places instead of summer school, or maybe it's because everyone's settled in. I do know that the kids are not refusing the rules and routines anymore. My grades are good and I've made the commitment to ace the last quarter of eighth grade.
I'm bringing up my grades also. Over the last few A net math tests we've taken, the eighth grade has been, has beaten the Springfield School Networks by a few points. In order to do this, we had lots of, of review. We played Jeopardy, took lots of notes, went over those notes, and we did quizzes to test ourselves. On the A net testing days, we were focused and we raised our hands so that our classmates could have quiet testing environment.
Now recently, when we took the ELA A net, we were in a similar environment. Our classrooms were quiet and also to simulate park, we had to give up our cell phones, my beloved cellphone.
Which we know is a huge sacrifice to make for these tests.
And also, we had a bathroom monitor and we had sign in and sign out to use it, one by one.
Another thing different about this year at South End is that the teachers and the counselors are more helpful. Not that they weren't before, but to give an example, there's high school choice. They went out of their way to give recommendations and they gave us opportunities to get the right materials to be able to log in and ballot. Also, they taught us how to ballot, just in case we didn't know.
Additionally, we've had after-school activities at South End Middle School this year. Two of these programs are the YMCA Y-Aim program and the Leaders Club. The YMCA helps out with homework and they do, and then they do physical activities. The Leaders Club helps us get ready for high school, college, and careers.
Donovan and I, and I are actually participating in the Leaders Club. They've been helping us bring up our grades, not that we need it. And they're, and they're getting us to be better connected to the community. After-school programs aren't the only exciting things that go on at South End.
We've also been participating in a great project that, sorry, we've also been participating in great projects that are fun as well. One specifically that the eighth grade did was about the abolitionist movement and its connection to Springfield. That project was a research project, project about the important people, places, and events that took place during that time.
We did this project to learn more about our history and trying to free our, and free slaves. Firstly, we researched a person, place, or event, wrote notes, and learned lots of information. We jotted down that information onto maps and posters. When we had all the information we needed, we went on a little field trip to Pan, to the Pan African Museum. When we were there, we did a few activities. Then we watched the Sojourner.
You got it.
Truth short film.
We walked the Trail of the Underground Railroad. During that walk, we found out that it wasn't actually underground. It was a secret passage from safe place to safe place. We also learned about the buildings and where there were, and where they were here in Springfield. After the walk, we came back and they showed us some of the old artifacts like slave shoes. Next, we went back to the museum and the African food. To wrap this up, to wrap this project though, we created presentations that we taught to the sixth and seventh grade students about what we learned. Representatives from the mayor's office were also visited.
To wrap this all up, that was just a little taste of what has been going on on South End Middle School. In conclusion, our school has reached many of its goals and there are many more to come. Thank you for your time and we hope you have a wonderful night.
Nice job Principal Despirits Cheryl too, nice job there. Springfield Renaissance School is in the house, Adriana Ochoa Maya Sinquiz. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
Hi Maya, this is Adriana. We're sixth grade Renaissance students and we are here to present to you our STEM-based spring expedition.
Okay.
Our spring expedition that the sixth graders had taken part in started two weeks ago that was called the Mission to Mars. The auditorium was black, the walls filled to the brim with questions as the hallways risen our excitement. As we were confused, we could hear the sound of ten, nine, eight, seven, as a rocket ship blasted off into space. Then, an actual astronaut candidate told us about the journey we were about to embark on. She gave us our guiding question, should we colonize Mars? You may be asking, why is this important? In the real world, scientists are trying to figure out if we should colonize Mars and an issue that a civilization is facing that we are learning about today.
Nice job.
They then handed our, our booklet to us. We then handed, they then handed us our booklets. And inside, we learned what kind of team descriptions, we looked at the team descriptions and figured out what kind of people we were, and we filled out the job application for the team that we were in. After the kickoff, for the next two days, we were given five different challenges to see if we were fit to go to Mars.
The first challenge was a physical challenge where we had to walk around the school six times, do push-ups, squats, bear crawl, and crab up and down the hallways.
Then we had to do the psychological testing. We found, we found out what kind of learner we were, to see if we were hands-on, we needed to see what we were learning, and etc. We then looked at pictures to see if we can see if there was different meanings in them. Then we did trust walks, and we did five-minute puzzle.
The third challenge was an engineering design challenge where we had to create a robotic arm and a soft landing space for a rover. Personally, I enjoyed the robotic arm because we were able to design a robotic arm that could pick up heavy objects on Mars we couldn't do with our hands. The soft landing space was an object used to help land rovers from a space shuttle. Speaking of rovers, we also had a rover vehicle program training where we had to program a rover to travel and pick up certain materials from different stations we would build on Mars.
Then we went to the Star Lab where the astronaut candidate showed us where Mars is and how we can locate it from Earth, how it orbits, orbits around the Sun, and how it can sometime in opposition reach Earth. We also learned that Mars does not have one, but two moons, and that the gravity is different from where we are today.
Each challenge that we completed gave us one stamp saying if we were qualified to travel to Mars. In total, we needed five stamps to say that we were qualified to travel to Mars, and we both had five.
For the next two months, we will be learning about how we will get oxygen to Mars, and how we will survive, how we're gonna find water, and how we are going to grow food.
We also need to figure out the impact radiation is going to have in our bodies and a sustainable power source, source we can use to live and thrive.
The end product will be four to five people doing a ren talk, which, if you know, is like a TED Talk, and we will be filmed.
And those top four groups will present the ren talk or TED Talk, however you say it, the first week of June, so we welcome you to attend.
Nice job. Okay, STEM Middle Academy's in the house, Jaslyn Jimenez, Jimenez, Shiana Pedro Pasqual Rodriguez, and if I pronounce wrong, please correct me. Come on down. Good evening.
Mister Mayor, Superintendent Mr. Warwick, and school committee members. My name is Jaslyn Jimenez, and I am a sixth grader student at STEM Middle Academy. At STEM Middle Academy, we have an outdoor classroom that brings STEM-based learning to life. The outdoor classroom provides each student with a hands-on approach to learning and understanding an environment through nature. We are here tonight to share with you our sapping project and engineering technology expedition in our outdoor classroom.
Nice job.
Good evening. My name is Shania Prado and I am in seventh grade at STEM Middle Academy. In order to begin our sapping project, we, we had to first research which trees could be used for maple production. Any maple tree, however, sugar maple, black maples, and red maples are the best. Trees also have to be at least 12 inches in diameter, although every eight inches over 12 inches, you could put in another tap. We determined that we had over 40 red maples in our outdoor classroom that we could, that we could tap for sapping. We then had to compare the pros and cons of different systems for collecting maple syrup and created a system that, that would work best for the trees at STEM Middle Academy.
Nice job.
Good evening. My name is Pasco Rodriguez and I am an eighth grade student at STEM Middle Academy. Once we determined, determined our sapping system, we then researched and made a list of necessary equipment, and shopped online to find the best prices on each piece of equipment. We collected gallon milk crates, milk dugs, and cut two-foot lengths of tubing, collected spiles and drilled openings in the bottle caps. We then used five 16th inch bit to drill a two and a quarter inch tappo into our maple trees. We built our collection system, tapped our trees, collected, sapped daily for about a month, and helped to boil it down to reduce the water and caramelized it, sugar. Now we are ready to taste our really hard work. We want to invite you to STEM Middle Academy on Monday, May 2nd, at 8:00 a.m. to take part in our pancake breakfast. You will taste our homemade syrup.
Great job.
Hope to see y'all there. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Well, Zenetti Middle School is in the house. I don't know if Principal Clark is here. Tara, your daughter cooking? She won that cooking contest, so proud, proud. Top forty, alright. And I know it's very special to a school committee member and attorney, Peter Murphy, that his daughter will be in this crowd also, Claire Murphy. So, Claire Murphy, Michaela, you're gonna have to help me with that last name, Kozmerski, Carmaine Landro, Landron, Catherine Ash, Sheriff's granddaughter, Angie Cartnega, Shakira Douglas. Put your hands together for them, alright. Claire?
Hello, I'm Claire Murphy, a seventh grade student at Zenetti Middle School. I'm here today to tell you about an important school goal, writing. Since our teachers have made writing a whole team focus, we've seen our writing improve a great deal. We are getting higher scores on our writing because we've learned strategies that make writing easier and more fun. At Zenetti, we write in every class, even gym. Our teachers work together so that all subject teachers know that we are able to do and they hold us to the same writing expectations in every class. In gym, we have written assessments about what we've learned. In art, we, we write reflections for projects we've completed. In our regular classes like ELA, science, and history, we write all the time. Last week in ELA, we chose a topic we felt passionately about and wrote essays or letters to people to argue our position. In science, we had to decide what would be the ultimate super-species and write a paper persuading others. Our persuasive writing in other classes helped us to write persuasively in science. Another thing we learned was that an important part of writing is reading. We also have examples of different genres in our literature books so, to read, so we get a general idea of what the type of writing looks like. For example, we read biographies and autobiographies from different authors. Then, as a class, we created a list that, of, that we noticed was effective from all the different writing. We used that list as writers when we wrote our own biographies. Another thing we do more now is planning out our writing. We learn to use graphic organizers to help us organize our work and to help us elaborate on what we want to say. Before we start writing, we are required to plan out our ideas, which helps us write our final drafts, because when you plan, you already have your thoughts on paper, and it is easier to elaborate your thinking. Therefore, after we are done with our organizers, all we have to do is basically write the paper, because our thinking is on paper and organized. Having a writing focus throughout our school has taught us strategies to use in writing that we will use for the rest of our lives. It has improved our writing and made writing a lot more enjoyable.
Nice job. Good job, Claire. Did you proud Murph?
Hello, I am Angela Cartenhana. Tonight, I will be speaking about the, the effects school sports has on our community. As an eighth grader, I have played middle school sports for three years now. Eighth graders are held to higher expectations when they play school sports because they have been on the team longer, and they know how to act, and especially they know how to keep their grades up. We have to maintain a C average or higher. Another student, another Zenetti student Shakira Douglas and I were named team captains. We had to set an example of sportsmanship, leadership, and leadership. Being a leader doesn't mean taking control. We had to keep the girls confident and make sure they felt as if they were part of the team. As our coach always said, we are not only a team, we are a family. Our pre, our school is pre-k through eighth school. The younger students came to our home games to support and show us how we are really a family. This gave us an opportunity to be leaders for the whole school and feel supported. Our games that are, at our games, our games.
You're doing fine.
Our games are our opportunity to show our skills and what we learned at practice. This encourages kids coming to middle school in the next years that school sports values family, sportsmanship, and importance to education, also model behavior. Thank you for your time.
Nice job. Miss Ash, say hi to your grandfather, the sheriff, The Rock.
Hi, my name is Catherine Ash, and I am an eighth grader at Zenetti School. And this year, I have been given an amazing opportunity. I was nominated as one of two students at my school who exemplify the values of kindness, compassion, humility, and gratitude with the strong potential and desire to become a leader in our community. I then found out that I was chosen for Project 351, which is an organization that chooses one eighth grader from each town or city in Massachusetts and helps them to become more of a leader in their community. I am honored. I am honored to have been chosen for the city of Springfield. Being part of the project connects you to other leaders throughout the state. Right now, we have to develop a project to help in our community. With my mentor, my principal, I came up with the idea to mentor younger kids in my school. I meet with them at lunchtime three to five days a week to help with, to help them with areas they are struggling with in school. I met with their teacher to find out what they need help with, and we work together to better their skills. Since I started this, other eighth grade students have joined me with helping the younger students in our community. I'd like to thank my Commonwealth, or the Commonwealth, for choosing me as Springfield's representative, my teacher, Ms. Shea, for nominating me and serving as one of my mentors for this special project, and my principal, Mrs. Clark, for all that she does for the students at Zenetti. I truly appreciate this great opportunity, and I'd like to leave you with this quote by Margaret Mead, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world."
Okay, last but not least, Duggan Academy is in the house, Ashante Starks, Anthony Ramos, and I know Principal Mike Calvinese is here also. So come on down.
Good evening, school committee and Mayor Sarno. My name is Anthony Ramos and I'm currently at Duggan Academy. The future lies before us, we've just yet to grasp it. All schools have a bright future. All it takes to reach it is a bit of work and practice. I've seen that practice doesn't make perfect, practice makes a better person, determined and ready to face the next challenge to reach a dream. There's no wall that can't be breached as long as there are teachers willing to answer our questions, to guide us to a better understanding and worldview. Duggan is a school that is definitely on the rise. Next year, our high school, which currently services 105 students, will be adding an 11th grade. Our 11th graders will have an opportunity to take AP courses, which will be offered this fall. College preparation is in the air, and our sophomores are starting to intern at Mass Mutual and working on skills such as resume writing. We are expanding our athletics programs, adding junior varsity level sports, including soccer, basketball, baseball or softball, volleyball, cross-country, and track. This fall, 7th through 11th will be allowed to participate. One thing I got to experience as a student at Duggan Academy was being an ambassador. Our role as ambassadors at Duggan Academy is to guide ourselves and most importantly, our fellow classmates on a better path, one that will ensure a better future for all of us. As ambassadors, we represent the main part of the spirit of Duggan. Ambassadors take on a variety of roles. Most importantly, running our community meetings. This occurs every five weeks, and in the meeting, awards and recognition are given for student attendance and student's achievement honor roll. Also, as ambassadors, we share information and activities that happen within our crew families. Crews involve groups of students gathered in the morning for about 30 minutes to work on team building and social justice activities. Other events or enrichments offered to us students are social justice murals, Gear Up, Community Music School, role-playing games, and drama. These are just the tip of the iceberg. These enrichments happen every week, there are more, and we hope to get more as well in the future. In these enrichments, we are drawn closer together and still practice group working protocols. When you enter the Duggan hallways, the change is noticeable. Positive culture flows through our building, students are on task in classrooms, and we have also introduced cutting-edge technology such as ST math to increase the productivity of students, and the results are positive on many levels. I'm excited about the steps we are taking to ensure a better future. It's been an honor, thank you, and have a great evening.
Nice job. Ashanti, you're up, Ashanti.
Good evening Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and the esteemed Springfield School Committee. My name is Ashante Starks, and I am a proud seventh grader at Duggan Academy. I arrived at Duggan Academy as a student on a roller coaster. I had my good days, but many times, they were outweighed by the bad days. All I cared about was trying to fit in, and academics came, came secondary. I found myself talking back to teachers, getting D's and F's, all while worrying where my next hot meal was gonna come from.
You're doing fine, you're doing fine. You're doing fine, Miss Starks. You take your time, dear. You take your time, dear. We wanna hear this special story. You can do it, honey, you can do it, Miss Starks.
My mom was doing all she could for my brother and I, but I returned to the shelter every night with an inner. My focus was on what I was going to eat or where, where I was gonna sleep, a bit more than a topographic of Alaska or flags on South America. During sixth grade, I was get, I got involved in basketball at Duggan. This was a new endeavor for me, as I never really considered myself athletic. In the beginning, I was nervous and I wasn't, and I wasn't good. During the basketball season, I started to see a change. Coach Sullivan worked us out like I never had before. Tired does not even begin to explain. He was tough on us and demanded respect towards other opponents and to ourselves. As we improved every day as a team, I started to see improvements in my life as well. We are a two-year undefeated basketball team. My grades started to improve and I started to feel better about myself. Basketball was not the only thing that has changed me, however. Not only did I learn to respect myself and others, but I saw my grades were improving. As, as I, as I was surrounded by teachers who pushed me and school, and, and school environment that I had never seen before. The students around me allowed to be myself. It was like a community-like feeling. I had never felt this before. Did we have our issues? Of course. But we were able to work through them, and it seemed like the students at Duggan, including myself, really brought into, bought into the slogan, work hard, be nice, and let's get going. Ms. Quadrozzy has carried that slogan into my seventh grade year. She has helped me understand that no matter what race, religion, or background you come from, respecting other is the key to life. She reminds us to keep it classy, even though, even though I still have my tough days, she reminds me not to waver on that path, as there is a light at the end of the tunnel. reminds me not to waver on that path, as there is a light at the end of the tunnel as long as I keep working hard. Mr. Gannon's- Mr. Gannon is certainly the opposite of Ms. Quadrozy. This- these two teachers demand the most from each- each student every day. And his quote is, "Bring it or else." The contrast between Ms. Q and Mr. Gannon is amazing, but the amount of work and inspiration they give- they have given these students, including myself, of Duggan is ridiculous. Two years ago, I did not know what a sweatshop was. Now, I can tell you the vendors that do not support sweatshop-made clothes. And during our big project this year, we have become little Gannon experts about clothing- clothing made from sweatshops not being bought or used at Duggan. We are at the point where we are taking stickers and covering Mr. Sullivan's and our teachers' labels on our jackets, somewhat a scarlet letter per se. Overall, my story is- is a simple one. Before Duggan, I did not know what I was capable of. They- through the support and inspiration of these- of the students and staff, my mom, and my inner strength, I was able to overcome- overcome obstacles that others may still face this day. I am proud to be a member of Duggan Academy. I cannot wait to be a member of the graduating class of 2021. Thank you for your time and listening- listening to my story. I hope- I hope it will inspire more students who come from the same struggle. I want to finish this speech with a quote. "I am strong because I was weak. I am fearless because I have been afraid. I have been defeated before and because- and because of that, I am now inspired."
Nice job. Wow. All our kids are very, very impressive. We'll have a one-minute recess if you would like to leave. You're more than welcome to stay and then we'll go into our formal meeting. One-minute recess. Here. President, can we all please rise for a moment of silence? We will dedicate that moment of silence to Annie Mitchell, who passed away at Kennedy Middle School. Her students spoke so eloquently about her. God rest her soul.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And again, to reiterate, congratulations to School Committee Woman Denise Hurst, baby boy Jackson, and you look great. Congratulations to you guys. Madam Clerk, would you please recognize School Committee Member Attorney Peter Murphy, whose daughter did a great job tonight presenting? Okay. We'll go to C to approve, actually, we'll approve the minutes of March 10, 2016, regular school committee meeting. Any comments or questions? So moved. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Motion by Mr. Vice Chair Collins. All in favor, say aye. All in opposed, aye. The ayes. With the indulgence of the school committee because of a family matter, if we could call A to recognize Catherine Kabachi, teacher at De Berry School for her efforts in providing hundreds of thousands of pencils to Kenyan schools. I know Principal Rochella is here and has to get to those twins. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually saw a great article in the paper in St. John's Church and recognizing Catherine Kabachi. And I thought it would be great to recognize her here at the school committee. I thought it was a neat project and I asked Principal Rochella to come and tell us about it, but, you know, thinking about kids in- in need and what we can do for them, it's a great school project. And you can see the great spirit at De Berry School without- without Catherine Kabachi.
So Catherine Kabachi began her career teaching in the Springfield public school system 14 years ago, and she has taught 3rd grade at William Ende Berry Elementary School for all of those years. In 2012, Ms. Kabachi returned home to her native country of Kenya for the funeral of her parent. During her bereavement, Ms. Kabachi still found time to volunteer in one of the local elementary schools. While she was there, a student asked her to borrow a pencil. Of course, being a teacher, she had one in her purse and lent the- lent the little girl her pencil. And at the end of the day, the little girl wanted to return the pencil back to Ms. Kabachi. And she said, "No, you can have the pencil," and the little girl was thrilled. At that point, she noticed that the students were using the tiniest pencils that were less than two inches long. After a month in Kenya, it was time for her to return back to the U.S. One evening, she had mentioned the scarcity of pencils at the school and how they were such a commodity and really only used for testing. Her daughter suggested collecting pencils and sending them to the Kenyan schools. The Kawa Penselli Project was born that night, but a lot of planning would need to take place in order to get the pencils there. It would cost a significant amount of money to ship them. Ms. Kabachi shared her experiences with her students, other teachers, and friends. Her students became pen pals with the students in Kenya. With the help of her colleagues, she began collecting all types of new and used pencils. She said as long as they were longer than two inches, they would be good enough to send. She created flyers and asked for donations and many community organizations gave money to help with the shipping. She even created and sold T-shirts, which they have on, to raise funds.
Yeah.
To date, Ms. Kabachi has sent hundreds of thousands of pencils to Kenyan schools.
Wow.
Ms. Kabachi exudes a passion for teaching and is committed to getting parents involved in the students' education. For the past five years, Catherine has facilitated the Home Visit Project at De Berry Elementary School, which began around 2007. More than 20 staff members participate in the visits. All De Berry families are invited to participate in the program, which is based on the Sacramento, California model. They are selected based on a volunteer basis and two visits are made to each family a year. These visits help the staff understand students' families. And last year, 124 visits were made by the De- by the De Berry staff. This year, we have already made 43. Under Ms. Kabachi's direction, the Home Visit Project has helped staff make better connections with students and their families. The success would not have been possible if it wasn't for the dedicated staff at De Berry Elementary School. The staff attendance has been the highest in the district and is currently at 98.2%. They are committed to the students of De Berry and Springfield. Ms. Kabachi has not only had a positive impact on the students and families at De Berry Elementary School, but has also impacted students across the Atlantic Ocean.
Come on. Ms. Kabachi. Ms. Kabachi, please say a few words. Please say a few words. And I need a pencil, too.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you. This was never meant to be anything big, to be recognized or honored in any way, but I have to say, there's another part of me that I have a faith that I believe that everything happens for a reason. So I- when I went home and came back and this whole thing started and went on and on, and now being honored by the First Ladies, Lanchion, whole group, and I just know that it's God's making. It's not me, I cannot be able to do it. I have very little that I've done, other than the teachers and- and the students. I don't even know, I can go on and on and on and on, but I've had a lot of help. One of the things that I have is I have a lot of love for everyone, and I think that has really helped me, which I believe is something that comes from God. And I just- I just love people. So when I go to Kenya, I love the children there, I want to help them, but I never- it never dawned on me how much children in other countries, even if I grew up there, I kind of lost the whole idea of how much they need. And when I- when I went there and realized how even a crayon, like crayon is like something, it's like a magic thing. So we collect crayons, even broken, and whatever- whatever you can. And by the way, I have T-shirts, so. We have- we have to send the pencils, we have to send everything there, so I have T-shirts. When you are cleaning your homes and your neighbors' homes, if they are all those three, four inches pencils and crayons, please bring them. You know where De Berry is and we're going to take it. And thank you, thank you. This is an honor that I can never, ever even think. When I think of myself as a little girl, when I was in Kenya, this would never have been like a dream for me, you know, to ever happen. And I do have to say, there's one thing we missed. Because of this whole pencil project, the school where I went to- to elementary school in Kenya, it's not the same school where I volunteered, but this is where I went to school. We cleaned up our school a lot and with pencils and crayons and little books, and we actually started a small library in the school where I used to go called De Berry. So that's one big part we had missed, so. Thank you, thank you. But join us, join us. You can- the smallest thing you can help us with, we have enough T-shirts, it can fit anybody around here. But thank you, and I appreciate- appreciate this time.
And I'm sure that school committee members might have some comments or might, you know, want to trade pencils for T-shirts, but any comments from our school committee members? Well, I have to say, you could already tell the genuineness and how humble you are, not even looking for any type of acknowledgement, but you can't put a price tag on what you did for your home country's children. And that's the type of teachers that we have here in the city of Springfield. The Principal Rochella and the whole De Berry team, Wright with pencils, way to go. Congratulations. Oh, we have a- we have a citation. That line didn't go over too well, Wright with pencils, so I'll- I'll get away from that one. Certificate of recognition honoring Catherine Kabachi for her extraordinary efforts in providing pencils to children in need, signed by myself, Mayor Dominic Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and all school committee members. Come on down, Ms. Kabachi. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you, I'm blessed. We all, you know, we all want to shake your hand. God bless you so much, if that's for you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay. We will, okay, we'll go back to the agenda. Thank you to the school committee for your indulgence on that heartfelt matter. These are items requiring a vote of the school committee. A is to approve the Renaissance Students' School Trip to Europe, Paris, Florence, Rome, for nine days from April 16th to April 24th, 2016. Superintendent Warwick.
Thank you, Mayor. Principal Coburn is here, I'd like to introduce her and she could come up and comment if anyone has any questions. We have actually several field trips from Renaissance. I think I wish I was a student at Renaissance, looking at all these trips.
Do we have to take these separately?
That I'd have to defer to, maybe if these have to be voted on separately, there's eight or nine.
Okay. And Principal Coburn, are you carrying on some past tradition with the bow ties there?
I gave him this tradition.
Okay, okay. I like that, I like that.
You look better in the bow tie.
Yes, you do. Principal Mahoney, if you're watching, okay. Would you like to tell us a little bit about the trip?
Yeah. I apologize for the late submission. So this is our school's fourth international trip, and I think in the mix of doing a trip in the summer, we just took 10 students to Spain and Portugal in summer 2015. I think I thought I had stood in front of you, and because this is so- so soon, less than a year, I didn't submit it, but Principal Coburn was very diligent to say- check in with everybody who has these trips going on. So I know, looking at the agenda, we look like Renaissance International School of Travel. This trip has seven students enrolled on it. Students participated in a variety of fundraisers on their own, raised over $3,000 a piece to attend this trip. We are scheduled to fly out of Logan, first day of April vacation, and all of the itinerary has been provided to you. And we will be back on Sunday, April 24th, and not miss any school at all. And that's what we have for this trip. And I can take any questions if people have clarifications.
I'd make a motion to approve the trip to Europe for Renaissance students.
Motion by Attorney Peter Murphy. Before you go on, I have to, and again, we have to continue to move forward with our lives and be courageous and live our lives, but obviously, you'll be checking with the State Department, too, with unfortunate recent events that have occurred.
Absolutely. We are using-
And I know you've gone before, but I-
Yeah, education first, travel out of Boston. And they have been in communication with our school and with all of the families of travelers in the wake of what happened in Paris at the end of 2015 and what just happened in Brussels, and are very aware and have lots of safety precautions in place.
I'm sure you'll have a great trip. I don't want to put it down, but I just want to make- for the viewing public that are watching that the proper checks are done as usual by school committee. Any other questions or comments? There is a motion on the floor by Attorney Peter Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Attorney Peter Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, we have to vote.
This one's Belize. The first one was-
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Contained, okay, I'm sorry, looking, okay, I apologize. Okay, so B, this is to Belize, I apologize.
Attorney Phelps is a stickler, but I don't know if we need to go to Paris, Florence, and Rome.
So that encompassed, the first vote there, my apologies, encompassed Paris, Florence, and Rome. On the Z, congratulations on that, au revoir. So now we go to B, Renaissance Students' School Trip to Belize for seven days, April 14th through the 20th. This is 2017.
Next spring break, yes.
I don't know if there's any questions or comments from school committee men and women?
Make a motion to-
Okay, motion by Attorney Peter Murphy. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by School Committee Woman Barbara Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more insufficient votes, this matter passes. C is to approve Renaissance Students' School Trip to Cape Cod. Is that okay, Cape Cod? Close enough on it? Cape Cod, June 19th through the 21st, 2016. Former City Councilor Keith Wright, good to see you. Any questions or comments? Hearing-
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by School Committee Woman Perez. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more insufficient votes, this matter passes. Thank you. D is to approve Students' School Trip to Russell, Westfield, Mass. for June 20th through the 22nd, 2016. You better get some frequent flyer miles on that one. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Attorney Peter Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by School Committee Woman Hurst. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more insufficient votes, this matter passes. Thank you. E is to approve the Renaissance Students' Field Trip to Viva La Las Vegas.
Nevada.
Nevada, okay. To Nevada.
It's actually Grand Canyon, Hoover Dam, yeah.
Everything else is educational, we like to have a little bit.
There we go.
And you know, when we look at, this is a great experience for our kids, a great experience for our students and families. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. McFadden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more insufficient votes, this matter passes. Thank you. D is to approve Students' School Trip to Russell, Westfield, Mass. for June 20th through the 22nd, 2016. You better get some frequent flyer miles on that one. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Attorney Peter Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by School Committee Woman Hurst. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more insufficient votes, this matter passes. Thank you. E is to approve the Renaissance Students' Field Trip to Viva La Las Vegas.
Nevada.
Nevada, okay. To Nevada.
It's actually Grand Canyon, Hoover Dam, yeah.
Everything else is educational, we like to have a little bit.
There we go.
And you know, when we look at, this is a great experience for our kids, a great experience for our students and families. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. McFadden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more insufficient votes, this matter passes. Renaissance Students and staff and families, have a great time. Thank you, Principal Coburn, very much. Okay. All right, the travel portion of our agenda is over. Thank you, Mindy, Attorney Phelps, for getting me on- Thank you, Mindy, Attorney Phelps, for getting me on track there. F is to approve the release of the Massachusetts College Access Challenge Grant Funds awarded to the Springfield Public Schools in the amount of $80,000 to provide college readiness and enrollment for over 100 current juniors and sophomores. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a result of the great work of Dr. Yolanda Johnson, who's here today, and you obviously won this grant, and Yolanda's been working on this project even without grant funds for years, given our kids' experience and with the whole college experience and getting them on the road to seek out college. And we've also improved our graduation rate, our dropout rate, our AP participation, our SAT, PSAT participation. So we've worked hard on this, and Yolanda's done a great job, and I recommend we accept the grant.
Any questions or comments? And again, to Dr. Johnson, Yolanda, great job. We have another separate program, 100 Males to College, and that's a great program to go into colleges, and thank you to you and your team. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by School Committee Woman Hearst. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more sufficient vote, this matter passes, thank you very much. G is to approve School Committee Stand on the Charter School Cap. Superintendent Warwick, if you can please give an explanation, and we'll take any comments on it if there are any.
Sure. This is something we've been working on in cooperation with Tim Collins from the SEA and MTA. Denise Hearst had recommended we also take action on this, MAS-C, which is behind this stance, which is the Mass Association of School Committees and also the Mass Association of School Superintendents. You know, it's been a long time with the charter schools, and there's a lot of issues with charter schools in Massachusetts, how they're monitored, also how they're funded. And the funding shouldn't come from the poorest urban districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It should be funded separately if this is initiative. So the funding stream relative to charter schools has been a problem. There's been problems relative to the uneven playing field. They don't take a fair distribution in many cases of special ed and ELL students, which are the most expensive students to educate. And, you know, in Springfield alone, charter and choice is $47 million out of our budget. So this is a huge issue for us, a huge challenge for us, and I think that the Commonwealth has to deal with charter schools differently. And this is a request for the school committee to go on record because of the funding inequities and the way that charter schools are supervised, to put a cap on charter schools, to come out and formally support that. And I didn't know if anyone else wanted to speak to it, but funding it out of the Chapter 70 formula is really an archaic way of thinking about public school funding, and very unfair.
Any questions or comments? Vice Chair Collins?
I think it's a very reasoned and reasonable approach to tell the state, before you license any more charter schools, follow the law that you originally passed, do the monitoring you should do, and fund it the way you should have originally before the problem gets even bigger. It will be harder to fix later on. So I think it's a reasoned, we're not saying we're anti-anything, we're saying, get your house in order first.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. Ms. Hearst?
I would just, one, I apologize for not being at the Legislative and Contracts Subcommittee meeting.
You had a valid excuse.
You seemed to have a good excuse, yeah.
Good excuse, yeah.
I did, I did. I was thinking of you guys, though. I really was, I wanted to be there. But nonetheless, I mean, I agree with a lot of the comments that the president of the SEA has made, and when I've sat at various meetings at the MAS-C, or I've been following all of the press that's been coming out about the charter schools, I think that when Chris says we're not necessarily anti-anything, but we'd like for some things to change so that it's not draining our public schools, such as the Chapter 70. And so there are a lot of districts that have come out either for or against the charter cap lifts, but I'm glad that we've taken a position, or that we will at least vote to take a position.
Thank you, Ms. Hearst. Any other questions or comments?
No, it came through Legislative and Contracts Committee headed by Dr. McFadden. I didn't know if he wanted to make a comment, but we appreciate him taking it through the committee.
I just want to say, and Vice Chair Collins, and also Superintendent Warwick and Ms. Hearst too, this is about equity. And I think Springfield stands very strongly on being a shining example in the state of working collaboratively with public and private entities. What we do well in the public system, some of the charter flexibility with our empowerment zone, some of the schools that we brought into, and it's showing very much great progress in our scores. So we have led the charge in that. All we've asked for is equity, to make sure that there's a proper funding stream, that we're not against anything on it. I also want to thank Senator Eric Lesser, who has really been at the forefront in hearing our message and carrying it across. So this is just to go on record, that we make sure that we get the fair funding stream here. And again, Springfield stands alone for being the first in how we're educating our children with a combination of public and private and charter-type entities, working hand-in-hand together. And it is paying results and dividends. So I appreciate it being brought up, and again, not against anything, looking for just equity and fairness of the funding stream, so to make sure all our children, all our kids, are able to move forward on it. So hopefully, this will send a message, and we'll move forward, and we'll continue to work with anyone that wants to continue to work with us in urban centers. You must remember a lot of times that with urban centers, we take on anything at all, all the social ills and challenges that come where other districts might not have to take that. We turn no one away, and I think we're moving very successfully in the right direction. So if there's no other comments, is there a motion on the floor? So a motion by Vice Chair, excuse me, by Attorney Murphy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hearst. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes, thank you very much. We'll now move to H, which is to approve a School Committee Stand, really mirrors on what we're somewhat on the charter, but recommend to the legislature that they adjust the Chapter 70 funding allocation formula to reflect the Foundation Budget Review Commission recommendations. We've had meetings on this, and Springfield is losing twenties of thirties of millions of dollars that should come in. And again, we're just asking for fairness and equity with all the situations that we deal with. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we've talked about this also before, where the Chapter 70 formula over the years since 1993, when it passed, has really fallen behind. I think Tim Collins has spoken eloquently and at length about it. Something that has to be adjusted. We've fallen way behind health insurance costs, there's been a cost of special education that's skyrocketing, it's an unfunded mandate, and it's gone out of control. We figure that if this legislation passed, it would be in the vicinity of $25 million for Springfield. And it's, again, the poorest urban districts that have fallen furthest behind. So again, I think we should come out and make a statement on this, and I recommend it. I didn't know if anyone else wanted to speak to it.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I also want, again, single out, Vice Chair Tim Collins, President of the SEA on it, and you've worked very well with us, and your union's on doing innovative, collaborative efforts and mixing all the good that can be done, whether it's a charter or public. So I think coming from the city of Springfield, hopefully, they pay attention to that, because, you know, we are going above and beyond, we are doing different things, we're trying new things, and actually doing things that have never been done really in the country. So all we ask is for fairness and equity in funding. And Danny, Superintendent Warwick is right, in the meetings we had going over the numbers, potentially $25 to $30 million if they don't look at the readjustment of that. Vice Chair Collins, sorry?
Yeah, the legislature put together a very exhaustive group to do this study, and they spent well over a year, almost two years studying, they came up with recommendations, and the legislature put it on the shelf. All we're telling them is, you put together the group, you put together people you thought would be able to address this issue, follow their recommendations. That's all we're encouraging them to do.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by School Committee Woman Hearst, is there a second? Say again, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Attorney Peter Murphy. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more insufficient vote, this matter passes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So you didn't recognize any of the students? Police officer still here?
It's been a long week already. Okay, we will now move to B, which is the, this is informational discussion items. High School and Science and Technology Band Program students will announce the first annual SciTech Band Day at the basket, one and only in the world Basketball Hall of Fame, 6:00 PM, April 13th, 2016. We're excited to be there, and I ran into some of your students, and I was at the movies with my family this past Saturday. Big fact, we went to... Mayor, you gonna be there? We're gonna be there. We're gonna be there. And we had a little bite to eat at Donovan's, too. Great corned beef, oh.
Excellent. So I am the...
Superintendent Warwick, sorry?
No, wonderful. I happened to be in the band room today and got to watch the kids perform. They were absolutely spectacular, so I know I have this on my calendar, but I wanted to announce it to the public and have you down.
You and Gary do a great job.
It was just a treat being in there today, and we had Associate Commissioner of Education looking at SciTech, and he was wowed by the whole operation at SciTech, but the band kind of was just tremendous. So thank you for your great work.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
For this of you, I am Associate Director of the SciTech Band, Shelby Carn, and with me I have our band president, Jacotta Jackson, with an official invitation for you.
Hi. Hello, my name is Jacotta Jackson, President of the SciTech Band, and I would like to extend a personal invitation to the school committee members. The Basketball Hall of Fame has graciously donated its space to our first annual SciTech Band Day on Wednesday, April 13th, at 6:00 PM. The Springfield High School of Science and Technology Band Program is renowned as one of Massachusetts' top music programs. Known to city residents as the pride of Springfield, the SciTech Band is a force of empowering student leaders to give back to their community by sharing the joy of music. In fact, SciTech Band students have even received a personal letter from President Barack Obama praising them for dreaming big dreams and improving our community. Amazingly, 99% of band members have no prior experience playing an instrument or formal music training before joining the band. Even without these years of musical experience, band members' commitment and dedication continue to inspire students and audiences throughout New England. Now, thanks to the wonderful generosity of the Basketball Hall of Fame, the SciTech Band can inspire you at 6:00 PM, April 13th, at the first annual SciTech Band Day. Hosted by the Basketball Hall of Fame, the event will feature interactive band exhibits, a film screening of the SciTech Band documentary, and a live performance by the SciTech Band. SciTech Band Day will celebrate student success in the arts and is free to the community. We would especially like to thank everyone here for the support they've given the band to make events like this possible for our community. We hope to see you on Wednesday, the 13th, at 6:00 PM at the Basketball Hall of Fame.
You're welcome. And I have to say, and I want to make the other school committee members comment, many of the things that we do in the city, I always incorporate, SciTech, even my inauguration, and people that come that have never heard you before, they'll go to me, "Hey, Dominic, where did you get this band? Outstanding." And I, what you said, 99% of our kids, no musical experience at all. And then you did that song, what's that, that hot song of dancing, and the horn sections are moving. And just tremendous. You represented so proudly, not only in the band, but in the classroom, in the community, and the documentary film. And it also has shown that the kids that are in your program, Gary's program, their scores, graduation rates, tremendous. So I don't know if there's any other school committee members that would like to make any comments, but you are a pride of Springfield.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Vice Chair Collins?
Well, you guys do make us proud every time you perform every place. I know I'm not gonna be, I've got a meeting on the other in the state, but I'm gonna, any cops in the audience? I'll break the speed limit.
Special dispensation. We'll look forward to seeing you, please. So Gary, you sit down. We love the great work. Okay, speaking of another great high school, in the house is Central High School, ROTC. I saw them march, we all marched proudly in the St. Patrick's Day Parade. So C is going to recognize the Central High School, ROTC, one of the largest, I think one of the largest in New England, and one of the largest in the country for winning the Best Marching Contingent Award at the St. Patrick's Day Parade. And that's quite a testament, because the Holyoke-St. Patrick's Day Parade is the second largest in the United States of America. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, congratulations again to Central. I always say that every time I go into the ROTC room, there's more awards. We're gonna have to build another rendition on Central High School if they keep winning all these awards, but we're so proud of you. It was great to see you in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and doing Springfield proud again. So congratulations, Major, to you and your wonderful kids.
Thank you, thank you so much. If I may just briefly, I just want to introduce some of our key members that made the entire St. Patrick's Day event so successful. Leadership is our number-one priority in ROTC. We depend a lot about our seniors that are moving up, that have been training for three to four years, for leadership. But I'm blessed with a unique group behind me, that these ladies are juniors holding the highest leadership position that we have in our corps today. And I'd like them to just come on up and introduce themselves to you and their position.
All right.
Good evening, my name is Cadet Major Marta Jankowska, and I'm the Vice Wing Commander of MA 11.
Hello, I'm Cadet Captain Gabriela Diaz, and I'm Deputy Commander of Logistics.
Hello, my name is, oh, hello, I'm Cadet Captain Caitlin Nguyen, and I am the Mission Support Group Commander.
Hello, my name is Cadet Command Chief Kundra Washington, and I am the Cadet Man Chief of MA 11.
Hello, I'm Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Jaim Guevara, and I am the Junior Classroom Representative.
We also have Chief Butman, that's been with us now, going on his third year.
Second.
Second year.
Well, you're gonna get to the third year.
I know, he's gonna get there. But he was part of our drill team that went out to the nationals that we came and talked to you about earlier in March. They went out to Dayton, Ohio, several drill team members here, and I just wanted to give you the information that we were successful. Our armed drill team placed third in the nation, and our several other teams ranked right up there as well, representing Springfield Central High School. And also, I just want to add one more thing in terms of the community service that we always do in Springfield. We are up to about 6,000 hours, community service hours. Anyway, thank you, Mayor, Dr. Warwick, the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a certificate for you, Certificate of Recognition, Honor. We would like to have all of you come up, we'd love to shake your hands, honor it. Springfield Central High School, ROTC, Marching Contingent Winners of the Holyoke-St. Patrick's Day Parade, signed by myself, Mayor Dominic J. Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and all school committee members. Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations. And what the cadets are handing out is a letter from our Department of the Air Force, from Bobby Woods. It's like a parent's letter indicating some of the things that we do in ROTC. In your free time, if you have a moment, just to look over the letter, you might gain a little more insight about the additional things that we do in ROTC that these kids are.
Major, a few years ago, Colonel Taylor retired, and you guys did a great job. I came to a couple of your training sessions, inside and outside the school. Tremendous. I'm glad I managed to go through it. I might not have been able to do it either in my playing days, but it was tremendous. So third in the nation.
You're an honorable member, though, sir.
Yeah, I'm glad I'm honored. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
We're up something to do. We'll now move to reports of standing committees. A is student relations, parent concern, school uniform. Thank you, Ms. Gresham. B is building and maintenance committee.
We have one, we will have one coming up for two items, both naming the Putnam Field and some Raiden Gardens out at Renaissance. Renaissance seems to be the topic tonight of everything.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments on this report? The hearing none, C is Legislative and Contracts Committee, Dr. McFadden. Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Any questions or comments? The hearing none, D is Curriculum and Programs Committee.
No report at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Hearst. E is Budget and Finance Committee, Vice Chair Collins.
We voted on the other issues, but next Thursday, there's going to be a budget and finance that everybody will get an invitation to. The budget is substantially complete, so we can get an extra chance to review it. Anybody who wants to come to the meeting and participate, please come to the meeting, the budget and finance meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. Any questions or comments on the Vice Chair Collins report? The hearing none, F is Vocational Education Committee. Thank you, Ms. Perez. G is Technology Committee. Now, Peter had to take his daughter home. No report from Attorney Murphy. H is School Safety Committee, Ms. Gresham.
No reports.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to the report of superintendent. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things, and I put a copy in your package of all these things. We had two people selected from a group of applicants from the Teacher Leadership Initiative, sponsored by the MTA, the National Board, and NCTQ, and this is for elevating teacher standards and building leadership. And the two teachers that have been recognized and are going to partake in this program, selected from several candidates across 13 states, are Lisa Sarna from Bull School and Andrew Willis from Public Day Middle School. So that was another nice recognition for Springfield teachers. Our attendance report is in your packet. As you can see, that the truancy is down to 2.9. That's lower than last year. The overall attendance is up to 93.4.